You can hear us.
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, we can hear you better now. Thank you very much. Okay, welcome. It's my privilege once a year to call the Eastside Board of Education leading to order our first order business is for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance. First, but we welcome listen to the table as well as Laura who are new board members. Congrats to both of you. We're happy to have you part of the Board of Ed.
Thank you, Jeff. Happy to be here.
Yeah, great. And congratulations to Lee and to Candace and to Bill for being re-elected. So we're happy to have the three of you remaining on the board. So that's excellent. Okay, so this meeting. Department of Business is election of a Board of Education Chairman. So this meeting serves as that annual organizational meeting. And I'd like to turn to election of officers. And before we pass the vote for nominations, just let me read our policy in relation to nominations. So nominations for Board Chair or Selectman. Any, just so everybody's on the, we're on the same page, any board member may nominate any other board member for office of Chairperson or Secretary. All nominations must be seconded. Okay, and all seconded nominations will be considered for the office of Chairperson or for Secretary. And then we'll need a motion. I'll need a motion at the end to close nominations, which will require two-thirds of a vote. Okay? So I wanted to make sure we put that out there. Your question?
No. I have a nomination.
Okay, let's jump right in. Are there any nominations for Chair of Eastside Board of Education?
I would like to nominate Jamie Shelburne.
Okay, we have one nomination for Jamie. So we're gonna make note and we'll keep tabs. Over there, do we have a second for Jamie Shelburne? Second.
I want to make a nomination.
Wait, let me, let me just finish.
Just, just.
First Jill and then, because we have that a second in order to bring.
I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, for the policy.
Thanks for the correction.
So I'm just gonna ask a third time. Do we have a second for Jamie or Shelburne? Okay, so there's no second. Okay. So we'll move on. Are there any other nominations for Chairman of the Board? Do we have another nomination?
I have a nomination. I nominate Eric.
Okay, we have a second for Eric Bowman. Alright, so we have a second.
Have another nomination?
Okay.
Nope, she can't.
Yeah, you can. That's right. Okay.
Barry Sheckley.
Okay, do we have a second for Barry Sheckley? Okay, so we have a second for Barry Sheckley. Okay. Are there any other nominations for Chairman of the Board? Any other nominations for Chairman of the Board? That's one last time, third time, any other nominations for Chairman of the Board? Okay. During now, we're gonna close nominations. So I need to ask for a motion, close nominations.
So much.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have Lady, I think it's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so all and not opposed. Okay, so nominations are closed.
Yeah.
Yes.
My suggestion. As we go forward on this to bring in a possible contentious discussion of these nominations. I don't know what he wants, this is a motion, whatever, but. We could withdraw the Democratic nomination. And not go forward with the Democratic nomination in return for this overture. We would get, the Democrats would get three members on the EAA Committee with myself as Chair and Jill.
That's not how it works, Barry.
Excuse me, can I finish?
You can finish, but that's not how elections.
I understand that.
That's fine.
But I can, you can also introduce other motions. Right, is that, does that understand what it was, what you can?
You can, but not during, this is just for the election of a Chair.
Right. But during the election of Chair, you can introduce motions.
Well, we have the first motion we have to do first, and then we can do a second motion. So the first motion stands on the table as is.
But if we get a vote too, we can introduce a second motion.
Well, no, we have to make, we have to act on the first motion.
Is this your?
No, that's, that's the, how it vote, that's how it works. The first motion comes in, you vote on it, then a second motion comes in. You can, you can make a motion to alter their motion and have them approve you're altering the motion. But you can't put another motion on the table until this motion is acted on.
What is the motion on table?
The motion on the table is Jill nominates Eric, Bill seconds, Jill nominates Barry, Kate seconds, Kate closed it and we seconded it.
So that is the motion. We have two.
Correct.
Now, when can we have a discussion? Isn't there opportunity to have a discussion?
We're gonna, the next order of business is to call for the nomination. Well, we have the nomination on the floor, so we have to call for votes.
Okay, so we never discussed, we never have a time for discussion. And I thought you did, not in between.
No, not, not with this process, no.
So, because we have two individuals that have been not. More of this than as a point of order or information, I'm. Just for the good of the Board, I don't want us to have a contentious discussion.
Okay.
Now, Jamie can figure out how to do this, whatever, but somehow we should be able as a Board to come to agreement that we don't have to have necessarily a contentious, you know, discussion over who's gonna win the Board. We're willing to say, okay, we will give the Chairs to the Republicans.
Okay.
And in return, the Democrats would get the Chair and two members on the EAA Committee. It's, it's, it's just a simple swap of preferences. So if we did that, we don't have to go through a contentious discussion of who is more qualified to be the Board of Education Chair. And I'm just trying to avoid that. Because if we go through that, it's gonna starve us.
Then I have to do a point of order, but that is not what this discussion is about.
Barry, we don't, we don't discuss this one. This one just goes straight to vote. It's not a matter of discussing.
So there's no way even to, to discuss, like, as questions to the candidates or anything?
Like, we need to get the Chair in place. I think we just need to go.
It's my understanding that people get nominated and then they just get voted on. We don't discuss the qualities of the candidates. It's that, at least that's my understanding of how it's been done. I don't know if that's.
No, we would not move forward with that, but I, I would.
There are always rules. I mean, when the motion's on the board, it can be discussed.
Yeah, but I, as the Chair right now, I wanna move forward and we're gonna do that now. So we have a motion and a second, and we're gonna start with Eric Bowman. For Chair. So. We need, we have ten of us here. We need two-thirds of the votes. We need six votes to. Majority, we need majority, yeah, which is six votes.
We should also call by the, by the rules, we have to call for ballot.
You can't call for ballot.
For ballot, if you'd like to do it by paper, we could do it by paper.
But I'm going to do the clarification rule that if you do it by ballot, your name is on the ballot. So we can track how many people.
Okay, I, I personally agree with Barry on that. This is such a difficult decision for all of us. Does anyone have a pad of paper to tear up?
I, I have right here. I have ballots right here, because that's what we wanna do.
I personally agree with him. I just think it's, I just. Thank you, thank you, Jeff.
Can I have a mention of Congress? We've had nineteen years of Republican leadership on this Board, nineteen straight years of first Tim and, or first Kevin and then Tim. It's a long time. When we talk about me being nonpartisan and working. But clearly, we need to think about that.
Now, am I allowed to make comments since somebody else did? We not.
Last time in the room, we're gonna.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We have a request.
He's got to be fair.
We have a request.
You can pass more of those off.
Thank you.
So we have to move to a ballot, if that's for policy.
I love this.
Very quickly, so very, so very quickly, I can agree with, you know, having so many years of a very qualified person that's run our Board. And the next person, I believe absolutely should have the experience and the knowledge of the process and have the ability to lead us in a non-bipartisan or in a bipartisan fashion.
Good point, Candace, and also Barry has spent twenty years grooming superintendents across our state and helping superintendents perform to the best of their ability. So I think you bring up a really good point. And I think that he has been instrumental in helping Miguel Cardozo, the Secretary of State, Secretary of Education. So we have a very, we have two qualified candidates. And I think we have one exceptionally qualified candidate who understands education, understands governance, understands buildings, understands the whole kit and caboodle.
Okay, we're gonna quote, thank you, get ready for that discussion. Okay, no more discussion. You have ballots. Right now, you're doing the one vote for, this is up for Eric Bowman. Okay, this is a vote for Eric Bowman. Okay, and then we'll pass these around again for Barry.
So Laura's gonna vote.
Laura's gonna have to give a verbal, yeah, we're gonna get a verbal from Laura, because she can't write, obviously, so we're gonna do a.
If we want to?
We, it was, the request was made for ballots, and now we've moved to ballots. Everybody is doing a ballot. So on the ballot, you need to write your name. And you need to write the name of your nominee for Board of Ed.
That's different than what you just said, Jeff.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. Okay, so.
Now I'm confused.
Take name of nominee off, and we're voting for your name.
Yay or nay.
And then a yay or nay. Go to Eric Bowman, and then we'll do the same thing, because that way it's consistent with our policy. Okay, so your name and a yay or nay for Eric Bowman. And then we will collect those. Yeah, you could pass those. Jackie, at least. We need, we're gonna go this way. You need two ballots or collectors.
So does that mean that Jackie needs to?
Well, we're gonna, yeah, well, hold on, we're gonna get you one second. We're gonna get your vote first, okay? Alright, got everything, everyone? You may need to clarify to Laura what she's, what was it?
Laura, she technically can send you an email, or she can send you a text, or she can chat, the chat box.
She can do that, yeah. Laura, we can, we can put that, we can use the chat.
Just send a private one.
So Laura, just send a private chat to Jackie. Right now, we are voting on Eric Bowman's candidacy for Board Chair. So you will send your name, obviously we have your name, but just send yay or nay for Eric Bowman as Board Chair.
Can I do that on my laptop, or do I need to get my phone?
No, you should be able to write on your laptop. See the chat function at the bottom?
Let me find it.
Should be right in the middle.
Mail function, that doesn't help.
Are you gonna email? She can email either.
She might be used to do that.
Do you see it? Are, are, are you using your computer for this right now, or are you on your phone?
I'm on my computer.
On for Zoom, right, Laura? Through the Zoom?
Yeah, through Zoom.
Okay, are there four little icons at the bottom of your screen?
Just got it. I think it's three dot.
She's got a new personal one, too.
But that's my phone. You're on your. Different.
If, if, if you can't find it, why don't you send an email to Jackie? Do you have email, Jackie's email address?
I can't open up anything here. Let me open up my regular email then. And see. Okay, there we go. I haven't, I haven't done this through Zoom. Okay, it says I'm set up. I gotta get the app here.
You should have her email address in your Laura dot whatever dot screen.
Right, that means going back and sending a regular email to her, which I can do, just opening my emails here. Okay, so I'm in my regular emails. I see I got a note from Jackie, so I can reply.
Reply, reply, just to Jackie, okay? Just reply to Jackie, yay, yay or nay, okay? Yes or no?
Push refresh.
For Eric as Chairman of the Board.
Okay. I think I got it. No, that's going to Jill. Good grief.
Okay, you gotta click on, maybe click on her name and it'll just say, would you like to eat?
Do you have her phone number?
Do you have Jackie's phone number?
I got Jackie. Jackie, okay. And send. Okay, he gone.
Did you send it?
Said it was just sent. It's gonna go a long ways, you know, maybe it'll take a bit to get there.
At least I'll go the rest.
I'm, we're just teasing. She said it's coming a long way.
You got it.
So Jill said it detours.
Okay, and you have a yes or no?
Yeah.
I always have to go the rest of the way on the road, okay?
Okay, we have for Laura's response. And then as well, so I'm gonna turn the two of you and we're gonna go through, we've collected all, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is for Eric Bowman, for Chairman of the Board. Read the name as well as yes or no.
Um. No, you don't.
I'll read the name.
The name is part of the record. It has to be part of the record for the policy, yeah. I would have to read the name. I, I, I know, but I don't. That's.
I don't understand it either, because it doesn't make any sense to me, but the name, your name has to be part of the record. It doesn't make sense, but the name has to be part of the record. I'm just gonna ask for clarification purposes. You can write yay or nay.
Whoa.
You okay?
Yes.
I'm trying.
Okay.
Sorry. No, that's okay, I didn't, I didn't need to fret.
Nice to meet you. You called earlier, if I may introduce myself.
Of course. Out loud, correct, the name and the vote. So Jamie Barshelburn is abstained. Kate Steele, nay. Candace Carlson, nay. Barry Sheckley, nay. Bill Berry, yea. Jill Karini, yay. Eric Bowman, yay. Excuse, yes, sorry. Alyssa Bradley, yay. And Lee Reinhardt, yay.
Please, other way.
Oh my God. I'm so sorry.
You know why I'm sorry?
There aren't that many of us.
What is Laura?
And Laura is yet.
So I'm, I'm counting, correct if I'm wrong, I'm counting six yays, counting three nays, and I'm counting one abstention.
That is correct.
Okay. So with six yays, Erica has met the requirement for Board Chair. So congratulations to Eric Bowman, who has now been named Board Chair. So Eric, you wanna come over to Board Chair seat, or you wanna come over there? This is empty. It's up to you. Come out.
Take the seat.
Take the seat. Alright, congratulations. And we will move on with nominations for Secretary. Eric, I will turn it over to you. Jackie, you've got all the, okay, we'll hold on to those for sure, if it's into the record. And well, thank, thank you, everyone, and appreciate it. And let's, why don't we move right on to the election for Board Secretary? So we're gonna open up nominations now. Jill?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Catherine Steele.
Second. Other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Candace.
Second, anyone second? Anyone second? There are no seconds. Are there any other nominations for Secretary?
I'd like to nominate Jamie.
Second.
We seconded, right? Other nominations? Other nominations? Once more, any other nominations? Move to close nominations for Board Secretary.
I'd like to make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, nominations are closed. I guess maybe I'll start. Is there a request to do it by ballot, or?
Yes.
Okay. So we have ballots.
Thank you, Jeff, for having us.
Thank you.
Yep, so in terms of the process, we first, it was the first nominated, so we will vote on Kate. And then Jamie was nominated second, we'll vote on Kate. So we need someone to collect, can you, to do the, forgive us, the chairman of, but, thank you. So on this one, you're gonna do yay or nay for Kate, to nominate, make sure, to be the Board Secretary, and please put your name.
Thank you.
And just a reminder to Laura that she'll need to email her.
Let's know when you receive that, Jamie, or Jackie, sir.
Should we go on?
We're waiting, we're just waiting for Laura's response.
Oh, I sent it. You didn't get it?
I did. I got it stopped for a while.
It's.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Did you get mine?
Yep.
Okay.
So these are votes for Kate's nomination.
Yep.
Bill Berry abstained. Eric Bowman, yay. Jill Karini, yay. Barry Sheckley, yay. Kate Steele, yay. Lee, Gina, no. Alyssa Bradley, nay. Jamie Barshelburn, yeah, nay. Candace Carlson, nay. And Laura Greenstein, nay. I didn't catch the vote.
Okay, so it's.
No, the total.
Yeah, five, no, three yay, one of. Four yay, sorry, four yay, one abstained. So that does not pass. We need to have, would have needed five, one abstention. So now we'll move on. Pass the ballots out again for Jamie or Board Secretary. And name, yay or nay. Jamie, so let's go to.
Thank you, Annalise.
We just go a little.
Nominations.
Can you go a little slower when you read them?
Yes.
No, that's okay, I was just losing track.
For Jamie Shelburne. So Eric Bowman, yay. Kate Steele, nay. Bill Berry abstained. Candace Carlson, yay. Barry Sheckley, nay. Lee, yay. Jamie Barshelburn, yay. Alyssa Bradley, yay. Jill Karini, nay. And Laura Greenstein, yeah.
Okay, so I have six yays, three noes, one abstained, so Jamie is the Board Secretary. Congrats. Okay. Let's move on to your public comment. So if anyone in public, or please state your name and address. Is your mic not up there, just to make sure?
The green light is on.
Okay, thank you.
So, my name is Elizabeth Montello, 12 Black Oak Drive, Eastline, Connecticut. The Eastline Board of Education, good evening. Congratulations to the new re-elected Board Member. Question has become recently, recently become important to the national, state, and local discourse. That question is, who is the most important stakeholder in our children's education? I'm a parent of a child in the school system, a lifelong taxpay resident of Eastline, an alumni of the school. an alumni of the school. I've expressed my concerns at numerous meetings for over a year. Not once has a single board member reached out to me of their own volition. In the summer of 2020, I watched the school board get accosted by a group of young activists called the LM of East Line. What they demanded received was a redirection of the school system towards school social justice, equity, and diversity. I watched a very small subset of the school board, three members, both the superintendent, write a diversity, equity, and inclusion strategic plan that radically changed the focus and policies of the school. This plan was presented to the public unanimously passed by the board with less than one week's notice. This plan includes, as one of its founding definitions, the following. Racism is a complex system of beliefs and behaviors grounded in a presumed superiority of the white race. These beliefs and behaviors are conscious and unconscious, personal and institutional, and result in the oppression of people of color and benefit the dominant group of whites. A simpler definition is racial prejudice plus power equals racism. Despite the miles, the strategic plan is steeped in the belief of critical race theory. I have observed, observed the board outsource its private community outreach to a new company called the Equity Institute. A company that is so proud of its results, it doesn't let anyone, including the school board or the taxpayers who pay for it, see the underlying data. This deeply flawed and statistically questionable audit is now being used to influence school policy. This company has also refused to allow me, taxpayer, and parent to view its full September 3rd presentation to the East Line teachers. This board has an opportunity for a fresh start. Educational excellency, transparency, community outreach, true inclusion of all viewpoints, and respect for parents are all recommended goals. I also recommend pulling back problematic strategic plan and redoing it properly with full parent and community input.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. State your name and address, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Nina Franco, under 29th Forest Road, Niantic. And to relieve you, this is nothing political. I just have a question about the pool here. I understand that the Board of Ed is in charge. And I've sent several messages over the past few months previous to pandemic. Many seniors like myself, we would come in the morning, we would do our swim very early. And we would pay yearly about $60. And being a senior on a budget, living mostly our pensions and so on. It's great for us. You know, I'm 68. I have shoulder problems, I have knee problems, I have hip problems. Swimming is the best exercise. Since you reopen, you now charge $10 a session. That would cost me $1,500 a year. There's no way I can pay that. People outside of East Line who do not pay our taxes, wealthy people from other towns, they can call up, or I should say on the web. They can make an appointment. They can do it five days a week as far as they're concerned, if they have no money. And some more they want, but East Line residents who are paying taxes, if you can't afford it, we can't go. So the pool is being hogged, shall we say, by wealthy people outside our East Line. And senior residents who in a best good reasonably swim in times most people wouldn't want to swim. My time, my time, my time was swimming around 10:00 in the morning. Pool was relatively empty. And retirees would come. I would take some of the exercise classes for seniors. And that was it. So I'm wondering when are we going?
Sorry? That's my fault. I apologize. My fault.
When are we going back? I can understand if you don't want us to use the changing rooms. That would make sense. We started about this. I have three shots so far. I always wear my mask. Why would you swim? And I don't like the fact that wealthy people from outside our districts are hogging the pool. What can we do?
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yep, the best to talk to you.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll follow up and we can, we can talk further and get you some clarifying information. My secretary, right, just give her your number to her. I will, myself or Rob and Cher, Aquatics Director, will call you tomorrow.
I got messages, yes, you're all still with the doctor. Please call me. I have the East, I have the, this website, East Line website. Thank you.
So any other public comment? Okay, a couple of comments. So the first item on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. Are there any questions on that? Otherwise, we would move forward for a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion passes for those at home. There is a donation from Eastside Parks and Rec to the East Line High School volleyball program in the amount of $1,000. So thanks for that. And I'm sure the high school volleyball team will put that to good use. In fact, I think they had given a specifics for what they were going to use it for. Fundly used to purchase championship sweatshirts for players and replace some older equipment. Thank you for that donation. Next, we move on to the approval of minutes. So we have the minutes from the November 18th Board of Ed meeting. Laura and Lisa, you would have seen. Are there any?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from November 18th.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, just got any?
I'd like to make a correction. I left the meeting at 7:26 and I wasn't there.
Okay, with those corrections, do I hear, does everyone approve the minutes? For the minutes? Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Lisa, please abstain again. So Lee and Candace abstaining, Lisa and Laura abstaining.
I think I was there.
Technically, she was there, so she could actually say.
But she wasn't sworn in.
She was there.
But she wasn't sworn in.
She's not in the order.
Well, she couldn't vote that. She could vote now.
Well, I think we know that.
Okay. Do you have the?
No.
Do we have, how many?
I have no idea because no one talked.
So.
I said, yes.
I guess you weren't there.
I was there.
At the budget meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the November 18th special meeting, the budget meeting.
Yes, I was there. Candace, I remember was not there.
Sorry.
Can I get a show of hands on the yea's, please?
No, okay. It's a special meeting.
Sorry.
But I think no, yeah.
So no. Abstained.
Abstained.
Five.
And then you invented them, James, saying that you left after 4:00.
I left at 7:26.
And Candace?
Abstained, abstained.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did too. I'm sorry. I got the meetings backwards. Okay, so let's move on to the minutes for the November 22nd regular board meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of November 22nd. I'll second it.
No questions?
Take your
Discussion, various questions.
I remember that meeting, we, you guys voted through board calls. And I was searching for the board calls. I don't see them attached to the, I think you guys set up a motion and you put it through. So what meeting was that? Because I looked through for that.
It was the one.
I couldn't find it.
Was that, I think, the last one in October, maybe, beginning of November?
Beginning of November.
Beginning of November 6, I think. This was the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a November 8 meeting.
It was too much, John Starewell.
Yeah. Lots of keep.
Yeah. They should be on the minutes.
November 8, East Side Board of Education meeting.
I just sent him for a copy of those.
November 8 was super technicals and vocals.
Is there a meeting that's about the minutes, November 18?
But the 22nd meeting would have approved those.
So those vocals should be on the meeting for the 22nd.
Any other comments or corrections? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes of the 22nd meeting, say aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Yes, your question. This has nothing to do with nothing, but who is Tom Bella at URI at? I just, I thought it was a student because I saw the URI. Yeah, threw me off for a second.
Okay, no special reports?
On the board calls, just coming back to that meeting, the case of motion, they have that the board calls on the tax. And just as a request, could those be put in there someplace so we have a record of what my past has board calls?
Yeah, we can, in general, let's hold those for board comments at the end.
Okay, I'm just saying that they're not in there. I think we should have them on the record someplace.
Okay, so let's make a note of that. So there's no special reports. The next item under discussion action items for finance facilities and community is the cable TV Advisory Council appointment.
Yes, this is our yearly appointment where Atlantic Broadband, Atlantic Broadband Advisory Council, per the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority requires that a member, I think they're like a member of the board to join there. Or but we've always had Pat Lannan, the last couple of years, if it's volunteered to do it on behalf of the board. And Pat has wanted to do it again on behalf of the board.
I was going to suggest maybe Kate would like to do it.
We could, yeah, that would be great. I know Pat would thank you immensely.
Because he has a relationship, I think that it would be
Yeah.
quiet for wheelhouse.
Well, I have a television.
That's what that's my thing.
That's a great idea.
I know that. That's what I'm saying. Like, this would be really good for you.
Okay, so I just don't want to make a motion.
I would like to make a motion that Kate becomes our Cable TV Advisory Council appointment.
For two years, beginning January 14th, 2020?
Yes. I'm frozen, so I
Leave the years, just for the comment for that.
I'd like to nominate Kate to become a Cable TV Advisory Council appointment for two years, beginning on January 14th, 2020.
Be one year. Hold on, hold on. We'll be able to bend the motion.
He recommends
You said two.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Wait, I don't think I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Those staying?
I'm abstaining.
No, I'm not. I'm voting for it. I'm sorry. I got some other things on my mind.
Passage, thanks, Kate.
We'll be in touch. Get you information.
Thank you.
Awesome. I was quite curious what it even is.
Yeah.
I mean.
That's awesome. I should do it.
And then he didn't want to do any more than Pat took it over.
How does it impact what's going on at the school?
It could have impacted, frankly, all kinds of opportunities.
No, I'm curious. That's what I'm curious. I don't, I mean, here we are. The Advisory Council.
I know Grant did it for a long time.
So put a future den item this for Kate.
There are, you're guilty of, there are all kinds of cool things that we could be doing. And I have personally felt a little split lock, perhaps is a good word, to be a member of the board, but not to be able to pull in maybe some of our students and have them learn what it's like to be the camera people filming and saying cut, lights are up, all the protocols that go with the filming and what it's like because it could advance them and their interest. We've talked about ELOs. This would be a perfect opportunity for them to create that. I do television. I'll only talk for two minutes, I promise. I do a television show that's called Stories We're Telling. I interviewed nonprofits, veterans, people who are entrepreneurs, our graduate last year, who I thought spoke so eloquently, was something that we should all listen to a lot. She talked about her experience growing up in East Line public schools and how she felt not as part of the whole, but became that. And then grew to this eloquent young woman who wants to be a teacher. So, you know, you could even make like learning opportunity out of it. It's geography, it's history, it's social studies, it's veteran experiences. It's powerful. So there's all kinds of opportunities.
Okay, thanks, Kate. So the next item on our agenda is everyone's favorite topic, the Board of Ed meeting calendar for next year.
Right, so. So we need exactly. We tried to replicate, you know, the previous year as we do each year. But it gives you a chance to kind of take a look at, you know, where things are falling as it pertains to our meetings as we move into January and
Only 29 meetings this year.
One less.
We negotiated one less. Any thoughts, comments? For Jamie?
My comment is, is I'm asking if you could please go back to 7:00.
I was going to bring that up to Jamie.
It looks like Lee's nodding her head that she
That was also what I wanted to chat about. And I'm curious, like, I know we've all kind of been, you know, soliciting and getting some feedback on timing the meetings. And I've heard some like just mixed opinions on, you know, what would be best. And I'm curious if we've like considered pulling our school community to, I'm just, I'm curious. I don't want to like shift to seven and then yeah, yeah. I guess I'm just curious. I'm curious to see what the majority of our community would prefer. I don't know if we've ever actually said any of that.
Maybe six before COVID.
We were seven before COVID.
No, my husband was on the board at seven. Well, I'd like to say this. What's like the difference?
Six before COVID because we were 5:00 during COVID for a while.
Yeah.
Then I went back to six.
All right.
Yeah. I, I think what, what Lee just said is a good point. Constituents have reached out to me saying six is too early. It's dinner time. We're going to be kids settled and then seven would be better. Maybe we need to do some survey or discussion among ourselves. Let me finish.
I'm sorry.
And, and make a recommendation or feel it, but I have heard and I know you guys have too, so.
I prefer 6:00, but I certainly understand when you're a working parent, it's, it's much easier for you to like pull it together at 7:00 and sit down. My only comment would be is let's make strategies to shorten the meetings. Because some of those go on forever and ever. And one of the strategies I'd like to suggest, and we can bring it up again some other time, is that we shorten the time that we speak our opinions or make appointment or a clarification to maybe three minutes. Because Because it just, we, I don't want to get out of here at ten or eleven o'clock, I just, you know, it's just, I just don't want to do, it's not, I don't want to do that, but whatever the board wants, I'll certainly respect, but again, think about shortening speeches or whatever we can to shorten the meetings, thank you.
I too understand the, why some folks maybe want to move it to later, personally, I like the six o'clock, maybe we could talk about a compromise to six thirty. I, when we were doing the meetings and getting into the nine thirty, ten o'clock, the efficiency of the board to me seems to just fall off, maybe it's just me going to sleep, I don't know, but I, I would say as a board as a whole, we're not on our game at, at nine thirty, ten o'clock at night and, and there we're just kind of, you know, nodding our heads. So I understand the need for the gift of parents in here, but I also think if we're going to be functioning, we need to be awake and. It gets a little tough.
I'm just there by the seven o'clock is not for me. For the people in the community who have come to me and spoken that they would like to be able to come home from work, eat dinner with their children and then make it to a meeting. I don't care.
Should we move the public comment or?
Well, yeah, but they want to watch us.
Yeah, so Sarah, I am hearing, you know, I think two of the priorities are what are the commitments of the board, for me personally, I was committed to whatever time we as a board decide on, but I am certainly resonating with the comments about the input from the community, I think it's important to engage them and hearing, you know, some of that feedback, I think is, is our priority as well.
Other thoughts?
I mean, I, to Bill, as you were talking, like when we, the meetings are getting to like ten thirty, eleven, I'm like, yep, that definitely resonates, I feel like cognitively, I'm not my freshest at that point, I would also say that I think, you know, if we have a committee meeting that starts at four, you know, if I'm on hour eight, it doesn't matter if it's eight o'clock or if it's ten o'clock, I mean, just that length of a meeting regardless of start time or end time, I think, I think that's something I would like to see us as a board engage on, maybe in a board retreat when we're talking about norms and how we operate with one another. I think that could be helpful down the road, in the meantime, for this specific discussion, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, I just want to make sure that, at least for me, my standard driving, however, I want to proceed with this would be whatever allows the majority of community members to be able to. And I don't feel like I have a strong pulse on what that is, is I guess what I'm saying, I've heard it, you know, people prefer earlier and later.
Other thought? Jeff, have you heard anything from the community in term?
Not a word, no, not a word. I mean, I, I, this is your, your decision as a board, I mean, I, I will say, you know, I'm looking at administrative team that, you know, stays here and is comes to your meetings to sharing information and I don't either like keeping them out, you know, as late as we have these sort of things, so the, the six o'clock has worked, but there could be times when, you know, I might let them go home or not, you know, be part of the meeting as well, so I just want to put that out there for.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. See a little of both, I'm a compromiser by nature, and I think if we can say to parents, okay, we'll start at six thirty, that would indicate we're willing to compromise, but at the same time, I think we needed to have a discussion about how to move these meetings along in a way that gets our points out without overextending the time for them, and having said that, I'll stop right now.
Just a thought, can we approve the dates and get some, do we want a survey? Because people are saying that we, the community wants it, I, how much data do we have driving that decision? If, if you're, if you're saying that you want to move it because you heard, do we have, I mean, maybe the person who spoke to you. That's my point, you may have heard the squeaky wheel and it might be a majority, silent majority that likes it at six, I, I think if we're going to make a judgment, we should do it with some data that says this is what's best for the parents that have, that have. You know, want to be able to attend, or do we put something, some sort of document out through and, and say, okay, you know, we're considering shifting the board meeting times to six, six thirty or seven, and then we've got some data that says this, well, a lot of people like this stuff.
We can easily do a very quick survey, I like sex, six, I like seven, I don't care.
Yeah.
I would like to just find out how much time and energy that would take to do that survey, if it's that quick as you just said, then absolutely, no, I don't know. I'm sorry.
I populated very quickly.
Yes, no, and then, okay, good.
This is my last comment and then I'm all done, so I hear there are one, two, three meetings with the town that all start at seven. So it just goes back to that's the precedent of what we used to have, and that's my last comment, and being that that's my last comment, I would like to make a motion to approve the. I can make a motion, nobody has to second it. No, that's fine, I'm just saying, I'm allowed to make a motion, and nobody just has to second it.
Well, Jamie, there's a motion, right? Second Jamie's motion? Okay, let's continue the discussion, I think Kate.
I just want to make the comment that some of those celebrate Jewish holidays, you have Rosh Hashanah as one of the things that's listed.
That's why we highlighted that, Kate, yeah, exactly, so we weren't sure, we wanted to have, if you wanted to have a meeting on that evening.
Right.
Because it is Rosh Hashanah.
There are board members who do celebrate the Jewish holidays, so just.
Why do I recommend this? Instead of moving forward with this, we don't need an answer on this today. Um, or do we?
No.
So, how about this? Oh, if we, can we make a motion to approve the January meetings, review the rest? Get the survey, get feedback. And also provide feedback to Jeff on any individual meeting concerns like the September twenty sixth meeting, so that we can potentially update this and bring it to the meeting on the twenty, the twentieth is just a budget.
It's just a budget meeting. Yeah, we don't have, we don't have another.
You don't have to have a special meeting on it, only because I have to say that I think it has to be approved by.
Have a meeting prior to the. So we have a budget meeting on the twentieth, why don't we meet briefly before that, we can approve the calendar, we'll have more data and then we can go through and, and then if everyone can take the action to send Jim or Jackie any specific concerns of dates. That would really be helpful, and then we've got the survey results, I'll make a decision on the twentieth. Is it okay tabling that?
We'll get the survey results before we have to weigh in.
Yes, we'll do the survey.
I have a feeling not a lot of people are going to bother responding.
You'll ask the parents.
Community at whole is our stakeholder also.
Boy, I can't, I can only send.
Is our stakeholder, not just the parents.
Yeah, but I have no way of.
You just have the ability to.
Yeah, who's in our, in the campus system.
That's all we can do.
Yeah, so it'd be yes, a no, or, you know, I, I don't care you went. Twenty eight, five, five thousand. So, um, just one other piece to this, I just want to make you aware, because it didn't come up, there's a meeting on the twenty sixth, well, if we don't have a meeting on the twenty sixth, then we're probably okay, but then October third was the next week and have a meeting, you know, in a week's timeframe was, we didn't think that was, you know, most beneficial, so maybe it's, you cancel one of those meetings or make it a short meeting, I don't know, but I.
To move the September to the week later and just do one in September.
Can we just keep the meeting on there and then cancel it as we get further down the year, I'm just, after what we've been through the past couple of years, we never know what's going to pop up.
And we've done, yeah, we've canceled meetings, yeah, we've added meetings, you can always add a special meeting as well.
I think it's forty eight hours.
So if anyone can provide feedback, Jeff and Jackie, on any specific dates or ideas, we'll get a survey out, we'll get the results of the survey for the meeting when we meet on the twentieth and we'll decide on the twentieth to finalize the calendar. The next topic is committee assignments. And I wanted to get, so there's, if you look at the document, there's our standing, there's the three big standing committees, then there's the first personnel policy standing committees. There's the Salome Slime Co-op Study Group Committee, which I'm not overly familiar with, so maybe we can talk of what exactly that is, and then there's some of the ad hoc committees, I don't know that we have all of those, like, it's Chinese program.
Yeah, yeah, it's died out and I don't think it'll be back in a, I'm sure.
So we, we start with the standing committees, the three, AAA, FFO and policy, I know we had in the past talked about having only, and for most of our, we are like one, each person is on one committee. So I'd like to kind of discuss that potential that if we do that, then it's three, three, four, which means that others agenda.
Like I want to come off of one. So, yes, I'm good.
Okay, so that if it's three, three and four, that means that committees are open for others up to five, we can have people attend agenda driven, I know Kate, you come, not on FFO, you come to a lot of FFO meetings, I know I've come to some AAA meetings because there was agenda item that I'm particularly interested in, so I guess. One topic of discussion I'd like to have is, are people okay with us just signing up for one, everyone being on only one of those three primary standing committees? Or is there other other thoughts, and if that is the case, well, I'll pause there.
I thought what I would like to do is send you an email that you know what my interests are and go from there.
That is my next step, yeah, if we kind of agree, so what I thought is we could, then, and we can discuss is that if everybody sends, potentially sends probably Jackie, sorry. But the list, like a priority of the three of what you most interested in, I think that would be helpful and then we can allocate, but it, it's helpful to know if everyone's only going to be on one or if there's people are okay with that. But, yeah, that's, that was kind of the next step.
Well, I was questioning, is this the point to have various discussion about the AAA meeting?
We can have it absolutely now, hundred percent, or we can have it after people submit and we go through, I'm happy to have it either time, but yes, this would be kind of the time.
What do you want to do, Eric?
Basically, I think is that the past couple of years, all the committee chairs have gone to the majority here and the Democrats have had no input to any of this stuff, so just watching other things go forward, if we could have the, you know, three Democrats on the A A committee with the being chair. H and I with maybe in chair on that.
I'm just going to voice a little concern we're bringing, if you as a board, you work as a whole, you don't go Democrat or Republican, you should go for what you're interested in as, you know, part of us, I'm just going to put that out there personally.
We are interested in that.
So, so. So I guess by, it seemed like if everybody's okay with everyone, the, you know, selecting a committee and that's the committee that you're on, so you're, whatever, that we end up with one to one, one person is only on one committee and one person is not on multiple committees, and if that's the case, then I think the next step is to express interest so we can gather all the interest of where people want to be and then kind of discuss the makeup of the committees, but it's hard to know until you have the.
Excuse me, I'm saying, I've forgotten how the chairs of the committees have been determined, and if we're collecting data, do you want to put whether you're even interested in being a chair or not on that data or is that something, who, how, how, are they appointed by you or? Okay, so I mean, if you're collecting data, you might as well collect that update, I want to be part of this committee and I'd like to be chair or I have no interest in being chair or, you know.
One, two, three, between AAA, FFO and policy, if you can kind of rank order your interests.
You've got the chair and the superintendent decided and.
Do you want us to do that now?
I mean, let's do it off, let's do it offline and then we can. I don't know, we could collect them and analyze anyway, so.
Email, I just want to make sure.
With your ranked order.
Yep.
One, two, three, as well as if you're interested in chair of any or all. That's your third rank, you may have no interest in being the chair of whatever you rank third, so.
So if I'm in a consultation, Eric, it's going to be AAA, FFO, policy, but not DEI, shouldn't DEI also be?
Well, these are the three standing committees, so we're going to first talk about the three standing, DEI is the ad hoc. So there's. So we do, so, so if everyone sends Jackie their ranked order, one, two, three, of the three committees, AAA, FFO and policy, as well as their interest in being chair, designate that if you have an interest in being chair of those committees. Then we have in the standing committees, we also have the personnel policy committees, personnel policy committees. And if you look at that list, there's two that Tim and, Tim and John were both on. So they're down to Barry is the only one left on secretary, Jamie is the only one left on non-union non-administrative, so if. I think it'd be good for people to express their interest in these committees as well, there's some continuity is important as we, we look at this. Teachers, we just completed negotiation, where are we in each of these negotiations, are there any this?
Starting up Paris very soon.
Okay, Paris and secretary, so we do need to make sure, we definitely need more on secretaries, obviously Lisa and Laura, you can express your interest. If, hate to do this, but Jack, am I giving you too much work? People can also provide their thoughts if they want to stay on these committees, if there's something they want to do differently and, and provide that, we will have people on multiple committees in that group, there's too many committees to have just one. But if you can express your interest, Barry, it'd be great if you stay secretary because you would be the one continuity there, Jamie, it'd be great if you stay at least on the non-union non-administrative because then at least you have, we have continuity there, the rest, we can shift around as people, okay, depending on the interest.
How many people do you want?
I think it's, I mean, we have four for teachers, everyone else is, we have two or three. Does anyone have thoughts? I mean, is it?
How was that decided? How many people are going to be in the committee?
If we just decide.
Okay, I didn't see anything in policy, but maybe.
Yeah, I think we just. I mean, in general, it seems like three is probably a good number, but.
Yeah, and think of that the other side too, your negotiations, you want to overload them with, you know, multiple. That's right, that three number is kind of where.
Yeah, okay, yeah, just curious, thank you.
So another action, if everybody can provide Jackie with their thoughts on the different. Sorry, I gotta remember to look up there. Sorry, I gotta remember to look up there.
I know, I gotta wait for it. Where can I find a list of all these committees?
In in Board Docs, Laura, are you you on Board Docs? It's an attachment.
I think I can.
That agenda item and. You click on it, it'll be under administrative content.
Laura, if you'd like, I will give you a call and we can go through that together. I'll help you as much as I can.
Okay, so the other standing committee. Be honest, I'm not overly familiar with, there's the Salem Eastline Co-op Study Group Committee. Is that different than our normal Salem meetings? Because we have our Salem meetings.
It's something that Tim and I have served on, quite often, we usually meet two to three times per year. It's set up, but then often they cancel.
So we should put, so you'll stay on it to continue it. And then if someone is interested in the Salem. Eastline Co-op Study Group Committee, I assume two was plenty. If anyone is interested in that committee, please. And then we have three ad hoc committees. Yeah, so the Chinese program had hot committee, I, is that?
No longer dissolved that, okay, yes, we haven't heard from it. If it comes back around, we can always bring it back.
Green stated, but any concerns with not having this Chinese program ad hoc committee?
We had spiraled, then we also had the Chinese Academy that came on Sundays and they were renting space and then they went to Zoom and.
This this right here, this is for.
But have we had any feedback?
I have, it's actually been, I wasn't mentioning that tonight, we just got some feedback today.
Okay, and so for the DEI Committee, Barry and Lee are still there, Tim was on it, so we have a. Lee and Barry, and I think it'd be good because that just forms, so if you guys are okay staying on it. If someone else wants to join that. A long email to Jackie and Jackie, I'm happy to help decipher whatever I can do.
Should we just CC both or copy both of you?
I I don't think you can. And then the planetarium, planetarium ad hoc committee. John falls off. We, myself, you guys are staying on Kate, do you wanna stay on the planetarium? I think three's fine, I don't. Most things come to the full board anyway on it, so it's just. Yeah, yeah, exactly, we're finally getting to where. Is is going, okay, and then we have, oh, the reimagine committee is Lee, Candace, Barry. And myself. We're kind of still in. I mean, my recommendation is no change to that as. We need to add it to the document. And my recommendation would be to keep that.
Which ones?
The reimagine, yeah, is Candace, Barry, Lee and myself. And then there's the board liaisons to other committees, so Kate just joined the board, board directors.
So reimagine originally has Tim on, correct?
No, 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 Tim. No, Tim was going to come to the first meeting and not even coming to the first meeting, just to kind of give his thoughts and ideas. But it was just the four.
And and anybody's welcome to come with those.
Hundred percent, that's why the ideal is if we keep these committees under five. There are certain things that at least one or two wanna come and contribute, they can as on an ad hoc basis. Lord of Board of Directors, Kate, I assume you're staying with that, Kate Board Liaison, Jamie, I assume you're staying. And then the Town Building Committee for Elementary Projects, Tim falls off, Bill, you'll stay. Yeah, so we can pretty much dissolve it.
Why don't we leave it until.
Yeah, okay.
It's no, it's that would be, it's a different project, although, I don't know, I was wondering, should there? Is that part of the facilities and is that really part of it? Oh, or I'm wondering, do we have a committee to to deal with?
And let's see what we, when I see what we get from. Yeah, because what we can turn that committee into. Potentially is kind of more facility building projects, whether it's elementary school or the pool. Or whatever big things are happening.
I can't say that I've attended FFO, does that get dressed usually at those meetings or?
The dollar piece. It might, I mean, we ended up talking about the. We had invited a special guest to that meeting, so.
So I would suggest taking it town building committee. Projects, take the elementary piece out of it, and if there's projects that come up and that's your wheelhouse, then add your.
Maybe of the, maybe of one, though, like that.
Yeah, anyone, so that works, is everybody okay with that? So the Town Building Committee for Elementary Projects, we're gonna make it just Town Building Committee for Projects, remove the word elementary.
I don't know if you can until the project is closed out.
It's gonna include the elementary.
I don't know if you can change it, because it's it's one town building committee already. I think each project has its own.
Yeah, that's actually the Town Building Committee, which I'm a part of.
God, I think you created one. Alright, so let's leave this one as is, if we need one for the pool, we can always create another one for the pool.
Or make one the general one.
Yeah, because we're gonna start talking about high school doors. So are we all clear on the actions for the committee? So for us, it's to provide a rank order of AAA, FFO and Policy one, two, three. And if you wanna be chair for the Personnel Policy Committees, are you interested in other committees or changing? But we do need some continuity regardless, and if you have interest in other ones, let us know. We need for the Salem Eastline Co-op Study Group, we need one person for that, if someone's interested in. We're dissolving the Chinese Program Ad hoc Committee. The DEI Committee needs another member, we and Barry would stay on. The Planetarium Ad hoc Committee will just, John will fall off, but we'll just stay as three, Eric, Lee and Kate. Obviously, others are able to attend, it's just three of us. And then Kate will stay as the board directors, Jamie will stay, Kate Board Liaison. And Bill will be our Town Building Committee for Elementary Projects. And then we will collect that information, we'll review it and bring it back to the board.
But do you wanna do that on the twenty of? You got the budget workshop at six, five? You're gonna talk about committee dates.
Can we do? Can we do the budget meeting at six thirty and do five, maybe five thirty? Board of Ed, we have been an hour for reviewing the calendar and agreeing to the calendar and then also reviewing the committee assignments. So discussing it. Any concerns?
The committee assignments are basically new, by the way.
I think the short answer, I actually don't know fully. So it's up to the chair to make the assignments for the.
Obviously, taking into account.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, the next, moving on, the next topic is the annual review of the Board of Education. Code of Ethics by Law is nine two seven one dash B. I think this is something that Tim always recommended at the beginning of the year meeting, just to remind everyone of. Our role on the board and what our bylaws are, so. Jeff, I don't know if Tim actually went through this, or it was just something as a reminder.
Yep, just a reminder, it was, you know, just part of our standing, you know, our first meeting in December. Agenda item and we left it on, and I think it will lead us to, to another retreat. On how we got two new board members on, so I think we should, one of our next sessions, we should talk about a retreat maybe sometime in, you know, January for the heavy day budget.
I know, so it'd be great.
Um, Jeff, I I do think, well. We have a couple of new board members, right? And one of the things that just popped out to me. With regard to the Code Code of Ethics and so forth, I remember hearing, and and correct me if I'm wrong. Terms of communications that board members have. With members of the community outside, like through our email, we can receive emails, but we're really not supposed to reply. To emails, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's that's the understanding that I had. So, um, as board member, we can take input through email from community members. But we don't engage in in replying to those emails.
No.
No, just wanna make sure that I was understanding that, correct? There's new folks as well that might be getting email.
Well, then, to that point, I think it's important, like I've gotten received concern comments, I guess, basically, is how I would describe it. And then what I would do is say I will follow up with, and then I will let Jeff know typically. Several times, right? And then just say, and then hope that that then it gets reconciled and that.
Yeah, and I typically will reach out to the individual or I'll have somebody, you know, behalf of, you know, like. That's an individual, yes.
But then what about Facebook? That's Facebook, that's all of those.
Can you be a little more explicit, what do you mean?
Well, and people are getting comments from Facebook, and if people are speaking on Facebook about what's happening on the board or what the board outcomes were. And if they're not the board chair, how does that play out?
Two different things, don't you have your, you as a board member, you're talking with your own personal Facebook?
Not me personally, I've seen other board members have Facebook activities that I thought. And I've and I brought it up to people. Jeff and Tim previously saying I didn't think this is how it should be conducted.
Well, maybe further retreat then, Kate, you should circle back on the bylaws of the board again and and look at your policies. And have some discussion around those policies as as a full board is really what should transpire.
Because what I see happening is that people are speaking on behalf of the board and making comments, where I don't think it's. Their place, quite frankly. And they're not the board chair.
Even.
Well, even if they were the board chair, I don't think it's the four.
Yeah, yeah, we're, first chair is a board member, yeah, yeah.
Joe, one quick question, if, let's say I have an opinion and I wanna, like this, like, I would, I would mind, we're a poll. I would like to have a sorry policy about the use of board members using, let's say, Facebook. How do I, as a board member, because I've never really asked this question, affect a change? Who do I go to to say, I'd really like to think about the app, this policy? I mean, is that something, and then either you tell me yes or no, or who makes that decision? And then.
I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
No, no, that's, I mean, I'm just saying, what's what's the protocol, what's the, what's the policy, what are the steps to change policy?
Do you wanna say something?
I just wanna say on on that. Seven hundred slide slideshow that the lawyer brought in. Didn't have a slide on that. Now, that was again, one of those meetings that went on and on. And I I can't remember, I may have had to leave early, but the, there were ten thousand slides and there was a lot of content there. But one of them was kind of like, it's okay, obviously, it's okay for board members to have social media. And it's okay as a parent, you can, you know, this is my understanding, what I heard that night again, it was the whole night. That as a parent, you can voice your opinions and stuff, but you, you know, the the separation between your voice as a board member versus your voice as a parent. And 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 it did get kind of gray to me a little bit in terms of where, you know, obviously, where, you know, I don't have Facebook. My wife does, and I don't even know what's going on there, but.
She's very nice and very kind.
It's basically, it's general social media is the whole topic, so maybe, maybe we can get. We do have to retreat, but maybe we can get those.
Because I remember there was some stuff that kind of, you know, like hurt my interest there when she was going through those things, but. Yeah, even, you know, the fact that, you know. Someone could pull your phone and look at your, you know, text messages because you had your phone up at a board meeting or whatever, all that kind of stuff. Don't know what I had for dinner and all that.
Would we have a protocol or set of steps if we, as a board member, wanna recommend, update a policy? So the policy is just come to us, and maybe I'm missing it, I'm still trying to dive for policy, oh my god, but anyway.
Yeah, we're we're in the process of updating all of those.
I know you are, I know we are, but what I'm saying is there, so there is one, there is a protocol written in the policy. As to how I come as a board member and change the policy, request a change.
Yeah, you you can, you can make a motion, I'll speak with the Policy Committee Chair.
Okay.
Certainly Candace, and then, or I'm sorry, Jamie, and Jamie can bring it, you know, to the the Policy Committee and.
Okay.
Do it through a motion. As a second, and then it goes forward, and we can. If not, then it'll it'll die.
Just, just a point of clarification, I just, I probably understand this. If a community member contacted us or a community member says they've reached out to the Board of Education with concerns and comments. And that person gets no reply, then we as board members say, basically, we are sequestered. In the sense that all commentary has to come back through Jeff, so that we can tell them, you know, we're basically better. Policy of ethics, we cannot reply, we only can refer them to Jeff.
And send them my way.
Okay.
Yeah, or send their information to me.
So when we get members coming in, send a contact to the board and if that no response, then clarify that. Of course, they didn't get any response, because by the Board of Ethics, we cannot respond.
Read a kind note, like Kate was talking about, saying, I'll look into that, but you can't really say, oh, like, you know, I agree, I disagree, I, you know. I'll I'll make changes or whatever, but.
I know, I I guess personally what I've done, sometimes I get an email, it's, sometimes we each get individual emails, not a collective email. So when I get one, I typically ask Jeff, do we, do you know if this went to the full board or did it just go to me? Because I don't know that, when it just, if it's one that went to the full board, my feeling is Jeff responds and and handles. And I don't, I don't respond. If it just went to me, someone individually sent one to me. I do typically respond, saying, you know, thanks for the information, I'm popping Jeff, who will provide, you know, more detail. Response, because I do feel like I, I need, I should respond, I don't wanna ignore, so I, I'm providing to Jeff who should.
It also could be a clarification when people come in to have a comment and say, we contacted board members about this. Nobody's ever responded to me to just say, well, it's not that the board members don't wanna respond to you, but by our Code of Ethics, we cannot respond to you. Only though, we have to refer everything to, to Jeff. I mean, that could be a point of clarification when people come in for other comment.
Take a look at policy in the Bylaws of the Board. Take a look at policy in the bylaws of the board, ninety twenty B, talks about public statements. Um, really, now, the board chair should be the only one, you know, that potentially release a public statement, all the correspondence coming through the superintendent. Um, so, there, there's, we can go back and, we really shouldn't read, closely read through and review.
Yeah.
Those bylaws of the board, because a lot of what you're talking about is in writing, all right, so.
Yeah, I think it would be good.
Yeah, definitely.
New year, start off.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Okay, so that ends the discussion, action items for the night, move on to administration reports, and Jeff. Superintendent before.
Oh, yeah, two, two minority, the pairs and secretaries will be starting up negotiations first, pairs and then secretaries uh, will follow, so we're getting dates, working through dates with our attorney, Justin Ritter. Um, the Chinese program is, Kate, as mentioned, just today, received an email from their president, whose, their principal, I should say, president. Um, and he has stated to us that they are going to remain for the rest of this year, through the spring, in a virtual state. Cases are still out there, going cases, so they're staying virtual, so we'll reconnect in the spring and see what the, the new year looks like after that, so thanks for bringing that up, Kate. Um, and I just sent you that winter sports guidance and weekly update this past Friday, we're still, Wednesday will be the ECC um, meeting, so really trying to determine, you know, the nineteen, please, you know, schools in, in the conference or districts in the conference. You know, how many are doing, you know, fifty percent for fans and spectators, or going a hundred percent? Uh, so, we're gonna kind of all follow suit, so if everybody wants to do that, or if you've got a majority of the folks that want to do that, we, we plan to follow suit with that and do fifty percent. Um, but if not, we'll plan on being a hundred percent and then just act accordingly if you've got bigger contests, like a basketball game against Waterford is gonna draw a lot of spectators, we might at that point need to say, we're gonna limit it to two tickets per, you know, athlete for both teams, so we're waiting for what the ECC comes up with, you know, on Wednesday. And we'll see from there. So, it's kind of tough, because we, this fall, you know, we've had, you know, full contests, you know, and I know the power of the pack of gyms or a thing, but there's quite a few people there. Swimming, you know, my daughter's son, I was at some of the swim meets and ECC and so there's, was probably a few people there, we didn't, then, now we're talking about potential limiting. Now, so.
And that was from the ECC.
That's on the ECC.
Or.
Yeah, so the ECC board, yeah, members of the board are discussing that, C I A C completely has left it up to two different, two different groups, or the C I A C has left it up to the locals to decide.
So, so the ECC's board said fifty percent, that's the A Ds or, or someone's gonna discuss.
There's, yeah.
The nineteen to say, do we agree with the four ECC board exactly, or are we gonna just go with a different?
That's, yeah, so if the majority is in favor of it, then we plan on saying, yeah, that's what we'll plan to do.
We, we are seeing a pretty significant uptake, though.
We are.
Right now, at least.
Yeah, we've had cases every day.
And, yeah, in the old line, I think we've had more cases this year than we had all previous.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, we've had, yeah.
But it's impacting differently because of the screen and stay and.
That's right.
Vaccinations and all that, but if, if we were quarantining based on, you know, um, contact tracing, it would be a lot of people out of the building.
Absolutely, thank goodness for the screen and stay coming in, like, because we were in the same boat, and that hit, right? Screen and stay started right around when the cases just kind of blew up for us. Um, we've had probably the last month or two, month and a half, forty, forty-five, fifty cases, roughly, jackets, yeah. And they're weekly, they're all, they're out there, so we send that, you know, out, they're right on the website, so all of the cases, you can see them at any time, they're populated daily, the numbers at, at the schools. So, that's, uh, that, that was, I'll keep it posted on the update Friday.
Good question, Jeff, can we have the principal from the Chinese school come and give a little update on how things are going? I know that they've sometimes been our math award winners and they do just such a stellar job with their instruction and such a vibrant program. Would they, could we have them come to a board meeting and just give a?
That's an interesting question, Kate, because there, it's like, they contract, we have no affiliation with them, they contract to use our building? I don't know, I guess I would say to the board, if that's, you know, maybe make a motion.
I'd like to invite the principal from the Chinese Academy to come and make a quick presentation, let's do give us an update on their program and how things are running.
I'd second that, because I'd be curious to hear what they have to say. I don't know what to think about.
Josh, I can hear.
Can I ask, how many of our students are currently enrolled?
I have no idea, we haven't had any. Since they've been, then, they've been um, remote, we haven't, really haven't had any specific contact on numbers of who's participating, remember, it's ours and it's all surrounding towns as well. Um, easy to get, you know, some participation numbers.
Yeah, I would get it, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
It's new London County, I know some of my neighbors attend, and I attended it on a Sunday a couple of years ago, and I was really impressed by the quality of instruction and the engagement and the energy within the building. There was sports, there was language.
They were using eleven of our classrooms and gyms and, you know.
It was great.
So.
Other questions?
Special. Go, motion to the second.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
We're gonna need hands raised.
And I'm sorry, what are we motioning on?
Just having a quick ten minute presentation by the principal inviting him to come in and give us a quick presentation on the program and.
Sunday Chinese.
Sunday Chinese school and update on.
Under Jeff's administrator report?
Okay, all those in favor.
I did.
Jill second.
Where were you?
And all those in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Uh, opposed? One, two. What's that? A lawyer is, she was, yay. And abstain. Only abstains. Okay. Thanks, Kate, let's move on to Annalise.
So, um, just a few things that I put in my update last week that I think are important to bring to the table with the full board and new members is around the fact that we met with the wellness committee for the first time this year. Uh, and the purpose of that committee is really to engage around the WELL S Act, which is actually an assessment tool given by the federal government on how well we actually are implementing, how well our policy is written, and how well we're implementing that policy. So, I know that eventually that will get its way, Jamie, to the policy subcommittee, and so I wanted to just give you a heads up. Um, Mr. New in, Mr. Urban and myself sat down and give an additional assessment using the WELL S Act. And, um, we do have some work to do on our policy, so. Um, Mr. Irving will have some interns from Yukon again this year who will help to sort of gather some language and help us get moving in the right direction. Um, I think we have a lot that is in practice in relation to the WELL S Act, but the policy language is, is not there.
Right.
But we also do have some work to do around some of our practice too, so it's, it's actually just really, it's a, a good exercise to do, and it will take us, you know, take us some time to get there, so.
So, is there a policy that we refer to?
The policy number? Yes, I can get it for you, I don't know about the topic.
Annalise, is there anything else while you look that up?
Yeah, um. On a wider note, we have, uh, sort of like a district-wide, I'm gonna refer to it as a district-wide sunshine committee. For the first time, we're bringing together a group of stakeholders, all stakeholders, all staff of the sign public schools, anyone who's interested to be a part of the choose happy committee. Our first meeting is tomorrow afternoon, and the purpose of the committee is just really to talk about, from a district-wide identity point, how can we demonstrate appreciation for one another? Build climate and culture in a sense of togetherness, as we still continue to be challenged um, through what the pandemic has, um, has put into place for us, so I'm really excited about that. It's tomorrow afternoon, I think, tomorrow, Wednesday afternoon, it's this week. Uh, Wednesday afternoon at four o'clock, the first one's gonna be a team's meeting, because in addition, on Wednesday, Jeff and I are headed up to Hartford to the Performance Matters Conference, which is, uh, offered by the state, and we'll be focusing, um, you know, on how our colleagues across the state are utilizing data to drive improvement strategies in their districts, so we're going to attend some of those sessions and learn from one another and hopefully bring some of that learning back here to Eastland.
Sorry, can you just give a little more information on what that is, the choose happy?
The choose happy committee?
Yeah.
So I can give you a little.
When did this start and where do we?
So, it, it was something that surfaced actually from some of the wellness committee work, because what was happening at the wellness committee was a lot of the conversation was driven around, what can we do to support the, um, the wellness and the culture and climate of the adult component of our community? However, the wellness committee is really driven by state statute and needing to really focus on the wellness policy, which I'm not, a lot of the work is a focus of that. So, we said, why don't we create, it was actually suggested by a couple of teachers in district. Why don't we create, um, a, a, a separate group of people who want to come together um, and work at identifying ways in which we can, um, celebrate the success of one another. Um.
So this is more for the teachers.
Oh, yeah, this is for our, mostly for the adult community, you know.
Okay.
Annalise, can I, can I add just a little, can I help you here?
Yeah.
So, the wellness committee had been started a couple of years ago, right? And that was with Jen Brash, and I think that it got too big, possibly, right? So, it kind of got lost in the policy part of the wellness and the needs and what we needed to adhere to, to guidelines. And so they've separated it. So, it's still Jen Brash, it is absolutely focused more towards the wellness of teachers and students and climate. But it's a kind of a, it's a kind of a breakaway of that very large wellness committee that had started a few years ago that also had the mentoring group part of it, because there's so many different things, it got very, very large and really a little bit unfocused, I think, and then, of course, pandemic came in. So I love that they've kind of branched off, still with the same focus of health, mental health, wellness, positivity, that type of thing.
And, and what representation do we have from?
Every building is, it's, it's a voluntary committee, and every building is represented, so we ask for volunteers.
And we have, we have.
Twelve people who have said, yes, I want to be a part of this, and every building is represented.
But they haven't done anything, this is just.
My first meeting is this week.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting, okay. I might be, can you send me that? I don't know if I can make it or not.
Are you welcome?
Are you welcome to, to listen in or no?
Um.
It has to be posted as a, you know, a public meeting. So, well.
I mean, it's, it's happy gonna be there, I want to be there. Yeah, well, why, it's, it's there to boost morale.
So, if you're ever attending any meeting of the school, it has to be noticed and it has to be open to the public.
Yeah.
So you can't crash it.
So. But I, 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 it's great. I continue to update.
Yeah, I would love to say, I'm, I, I was just, is there anything, any way that I could help boost morale, I would.
I really appreciate that.
And, and if it's staying away from the meeting, that's good.
Might be, because they're, they're free to talk publicly.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just gonna bother you. Then policy sixty-one forty-two, just to see that.
Forty-two. No, 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 no.
Thank you.
If I could just jump in real quick on that, I know Eric works at Pfizer, my husband was a previous Pfizer employee, and they used to give fish cards out, my husband got so excited whenever he got a fish card, and it's just a little thing that you do, you know, that you kind of boost somebody.
Things like that, right?
Big difference.
Look for the good.
No, 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 just opportunities to lift each other up.
We do, we went from cards to automated to now there's other awards that moved on. The, the fish book, if anybody read, the fish book is phenomenal, it's a terrible, short half hour read or something, uh, that, it's, I think it's called Fish. Yeah, but it's a, you know, business self-help book. It's, it's very good.
I get to the, to the.
Check it out.
You could do a scallop show or something.
This is just off topic again, I've noticed in the, in the news, the national news, that every, it seems like, obviously, every school system within the United States, everyone's experiencing burnout, low staff, anything like that. As a board member, we, maybe we can really not, maybe we don't have the ability to affect anything, to support our, uh, our staff, but I would love us later on to talk about something that we do, we as a board, we support the staff. I know we're not really allowed to come in the buildings without, you know, lights flashing on our heads, but, uh, I really, I'm just saying, this is for, if anyone's interested in doing that, I would love, you know, I don't, I mean, we can have our own sunshine committee and basically do it for the teachers, or administrators and everyone, because it sounds horrible, I mean, I'm not an educator, but you know, I've seen, it just, it's quite earth-shattering, I know the appropriate word to use, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Any other comments, so, Maran is, I assume, not here?
No.
Not virtual, anything, okay? And then there are no committee reports, right? Okay, so then we're on to board comments and future agenda items.
Um, Jeff, I'm assuming you're aware of this, I just happened here, because we had a faculty meeting today at school, but um, region eighteen up their sub pay to one twenty, so I guess there's like a bidding war going on for subs? Where are we and, and how are we doing?
Um, we basically leveled off and have been about the same. Um, we contract now, I don't know what, what mine, because.
I don't think we do, but, um, I don't think we do.
Okay, so, I mean, it might come to that if other districts are starting to, raising those rates. Um, we just did the MOU for, with the teachers of the certified staff as well as the pairs, to pay more money for them to cover, but that's an additional burden, it's a total option. There are some people, some people want to do it, we, we serve it, some people don't.
Um, so. That was a neat idea, by the way, because my wife was saying, that's great, I could just stay after and do my planning after school, and I can make a few extra bucks.
Exactly.
In a classroom, so that was, I thought that was a great idea.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll keep track of that and see, but, um, we, we're gonna have to, mostly sure, we're gonna have to watch, just to see, we, we might have to end up paying, you know, a little bit more, or raising, you know, the rates with through Kelly Services, um, so we're paying to, to capture.
I have some covering, a class recently at our school was, was a kind of emergency situation, but I think that the fact that you're offering a few bucks and you could do your prep workout for school, it's kind of like you know, sit and know the teachers versus some, you know, that probably can actually get some content.
Yeah, exactly, that was part of the premise behind it, so, we'll see where it goes.
Other board comments? Or none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I second.
All of the favor. It's everyone.